... school committee meeting of May 13th, 2024. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Committee Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. I'd like to introduce our newest school crew member, Carol Lizardi. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Cara.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
All right, our first business is our reorganization.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for nomination for chairperson.
So I know we discussed, I discussed it a little bit with each of you. I'm ready to be the chair if you're all ready to give it to me, so unless someone else would like to step up.
Hmm.
No.
I would make a motion to nominate Robin Dragonetti for the chairperson of the school committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so for vice chairperson, I know a few of you had expressed some interest, and I had a couple of people actually reach out to me too about nominating others, so I would like to make a motion to nominate Carrie Milton as the vice chairperson of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then our final position is clerk. Again, Carrie, you've been carrying the, not the torch, but the folder. You're ready, you're ready to pass it on?
Yes, I am ready to pass it on.
And I know, again, a couple of you had said, "I'm willing to do it. I'm happy to be the clerk," but Christine, I think, was the most gung ho. You still up for it?
Yes, I am.
All right. So move to nominate Christine Myszkowski as the clerk of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Any discussion points? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that brings us to subcommittee appointments. So we have a list of subcommittees on here. I did go through and look at the descriptions and made some suggested changes. If you had pulled up, or if you pull up the Google Drive now, you can see some of those changes. So I'm just going to review some of them, and then we can talk about who, our strengths and weaknesses, and who would be ready to take on these different positions. So the first is capital budget facilities. The description is to attend capital budget meetings in March/April timeframe to review and vote on large purchases requested from different departments in the town being made outside of their department budget. And then added to this is to meet with the superintendent to review district vision and goals and prioritize capital expenditures in alignment with goals for coming years. Does anyone have anything that they feel they want to add to this description, or do you think that's comprehensive?
I think it's comprehensive.
And is anyone interested? I know.
I am interested.
Yeah.
In the budget generally, so capital budget is also interesting.
Same for me.
All right. So I kind of consider this kind of like the little budget. I'm ready to pass over my torch maybe next year on the budget subcommittee to Cara, because I know that's one of your strengths and your background. But I would like to make a motion to elect Cara Lizardi and David Schmier on the capital budget facilities subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so then we have personnel and negotiations. This description has changed a little bit as well. As we know, it, this position involves negotiations with the teachers' union, but also acts as the employer of the school employees for collective bargaining purposes, designate a negotiator and/or negotiating team, receive advice from the superintendent regarding educational consequences of bargaining positions, participate in initial discussions around adding and eliminating positions, initial review of administrative contracts, review of stipends, receive monthly report of changes, additions and departures of staff positions, and ensure that the superintendent of schools is providing a monthly or quarterly to be determined update on any staffing impacts within the system. So these changes are born out of the policies that Carrie and I have reviewed over the last couple of months. We've kind of identified different things that we need to be doing as a committee, and so it just made sense to put it on the personnel subcommittee. I know, Dave, you really want to continue on personnel.
Yes.
And Carrie, you still interested?
I'm interested, yeah.
Okay. Is anyone else?
No.
Okay. Move to elect Carrie Milton and David Schmier as members of the personnel negotiations subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we have safe schools representative. This is typically two people. This, I know, has been hard for some of us who have held the position in the past to attend, because it is held during the school day. So in discussing it with Mark, it makes sense to move this to a one-person committee plus an alternate, in case the other person cannot attend. So the description here is the safe schools rep shall serve on behalf of the West Bridgewater School Committee. In a monthly cadence, they partake in confidential collaborative discussions with other community leaders to plan, implement, and sustain the programs and services that foster a safe and supportive environment on our school campuses and within the community. Report back to full committee on budgetary implications and consistency of procedural implementation with school committee policies as needed. Carrie, are you still interested in?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then Christine, did you?
I'll be the alternate.
The alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to elect Carrie Milton as the primary safe school representative and Christine Myszkowski as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have donations and dedications. Review as needed any gifts and contributions presented to the school district to confirm they satisfy the criteria outlined in our gifts and contributions policies. We do have a policy that states that we need to have all contributions and donations come before so that we can accept them formally as property of the district. Review as needed any requests for dedications, present any donations and dedication requests to the committee, and in collaboration with administration, maintain a list of donated programming and bring forth motion for acceptance by the committee, either monthly or quarterly. That's another that should be, to be determined. One of the things that Carrie and I had talked about is the amount that the PTO really supports us, and being able to recognize and acknowledge a lot of that programming, but also to acknowledge how much that really supports our budget. I think that's important to kind of bring to the light. Does anyone have anything they want to add to that? Nope. And who's interested in donations? Christine, were you?
Yeah.
Willing to? Okay. Move to elect Christine Myszkowski to donations and dedication subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have sick leave bank representative. This was pretty straightforward. Vote on requests that are brought forth by teachers. Meetings are held as needed. The purpose of the sick bank, or sick leave bank, is to provide a means of obtaining additional sick leave days to avoid loss of compensation due to a catastrophic illness or injury of the employee's sick leave bank member that requires intermittent or continuous absence from work. And I know, Christine, you said you'd be willing to take this one as well.
Yeah.
Anyone want to fight for it? No, I didn't think so. I didn't think so. Move to nominate Christine Myszkowski as the sick leave bank representative. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then we have warrant and budget. So the description on this one also has been beefed up a little bit in reading the frequently asked questions on the MASU website and seeing that there are a lot of responsibilities, considering that policy and budget are our primary roles as a committee. We did add, or I did add with Carrie's input, she's the wordsmith here, language around what this subcommittee is responsible for. So it's review and sign bill and payroll warrants weekly and as needed, review quarterly financial reports, approve transfers between cost centers, work with the superintendent and school business administrator in identifying priorities for upcoming fiscal year, and maintain two-way communication with the board of selectmen and town administrator around district budgetary needs and financial resources of the town. Do you, and do you think we should add anything? Do you think that covers everything? This one's kind of a hefty one.
I think the additions are good.
Okay. I'd like to stay on this committee moving forward, and I know, Dave, you are as well.
Yeah, strong interest in staying.
Strong interest. All right. Move to elect myself, Robin Dragonetti, and David Schmier as members of the warrant budget subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're getting to the end here. Policy review. So this is to go through the policies, but not also, or not only go through the policies, but make sure that procedures are in line with our policies. So the description is, review, maintain, and develop educational goals and policies for the schools in the district, consistent with the requirements of law and the statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education. Policies should be reflective of the fact that the school committee has oversight of and responsibility for the school system, the direction in which the system must go, and establish criteria to determine if its goals and policies are being met. Consult with the superintendent on alignment of district protocols as needed. Quarterly meetings with the superintendent to review and follow up on procedural implementation. This is another one that I feel I strongly, I want to continue with. You're the same, Carrie?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're like, we're two-thirds of the way through the policy index, so once we get through the whole thing.
I'd like to see it through.
Yeah, we'll finish it, finish it off. Move to elect myself, Robin Dragonetti, and Carrie Milton as members of the policy review subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I think you guys have done a fantastic job reviewing policies and updating them, so I'm glad that you're both interested in staying on.
Thanks, Dave.
Not a strong interest from you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have the wellness committee representative. This is one that was just added based on review of our policy, ADF. ADF states that there will be a school committee member on the wellness committee. Just like the safe schools committee, it makes sense that we only need one and then have an alternate, if this makes sense to everybody here. Okay. This subcommittee also does meet during the school day, which I know is, makes it difficult for some of us. So per policy ADF, the wellness committee will meet at minimum four times per year. Each year, the wellness committee will create a district wellness plan. The plan will have goals to promote wellness in the areas of nutrition education, physical education activities, and other school-based activities. The wellness committee will assess all education curricula and materials pertaining to wellness for accuracy, completeness, balance, and consistency with the state and district's educational goals and standards, and provide report to the school committee annually. So I know, Cara, you said you'd be interested in the wellness committee?
Right now, I have the flexibility during the school day, so.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And then I'll be the alternate for that. I'm happy to do that. So move to elect Cara as the primary on the wellness committee and myself as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and our very last one is another one we added this last year, the student advisory committee. So as required by state law, the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session with its student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by the high school student body. The chair of the student advisory committee shall be an ex officio non-voting member of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions unless such right is expressly granted by the school committee. The responsibilities are to review upcoming agenda items with the student representative, assist student advisor in developing and bringing forth updates from the student body, and the frequency on that really should be determined by the student advisory committee, because this is their, this is their area. Christine, you've held this one.
Yeah.
Are you interested in continuing?
Yeah.
And Cara, you want to take this one as well? All right. Move to elect Christine Myszkowski and Cara Lizardi as members of the student advisory committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for bearing with us. We only do that once a year. So it's time to introduce the student representatives. Doesn't look like we have one today.
I don't think we do. Don't we?
Yeah. Ah, that's okay. That's okay. All right, so moving on to minutes. The minutes are in our folder. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to review them. They are ready, so I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2024 school committee meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, superintendent's up.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. I'll start with the FY '25 budget, and this is a quick update, because at last week's town meeting, it passed, town meeting, the full budget, the full school committee approved budget. So that was very exciting for, I think, the community and obviously the school district. Also, at the town meeting, we passed, the town passed two capital budget items, the elementary teacher Chromebooks and the middle, senior, high school copiers. So just a thank you to this board, the town boards, who fully recommended the budget, and to the citizens of West Bridgewater for fully funding our budget. Very much appreciated. Next, an update on school choice. So we have sent letters out to the elementary parents who have applied. Again, we're well over 220 across the district, and quite a bit of them are in the elementary level. Unfortunately, right now, grades K through six, we are closed, even for siblings. Our numbers are just at that precarious point where it just doesn't work for us to add. We're, we're overcrowding in certain grades, and we're looking towards the future, next couple of years. We're still years away from a building which would provide us more space. We hope to pull the ninth graders tomorrow. We'll start sending out notifications, then we'll look at 10, 11, and 12 to see, start with siblings. Well, always, we'll start with siblings first anyhow, but then we'll do the high school, and then we'll look at grade seven and eight. Grade six this year is 98, so we may go add a few, well, again, starting with siblings. Going into the middle, senior, high school, it's a bit different than the elementary level. First of all, they're not here as long by nature of being in an older grade, and they do change classes, so they're not in one class for the entire time. And again, we've been very cautious with the growth we have in town and the growth that's yet to come.
Mark, how often when we, well, I guess, we've had you in the past, when we can't enroll a sibling, do the families, I guess, pull their other child or children from?
It's a concern we have. It hasn't really happened, because like, the students are integrated, and that's one of the reasons we like to be able to accept siblings, but maybe down the road we can.
Do we have any idea about what our number will be for school choice students next year? I know last year, the current academic year, we were a little lower than we were hoping budget-wise.
Right.
Do you have a projection for where we might be?
We're hoping to get at the number we're graduating, I believe, 33 seniors. We also may lose a few students to Southeastern that could be, you know, considered choice. We've had some, they've moved out of town, but they don't change the enrollment over this past few weeks and, you know, year. So we hope to be right at where we're at this year, but, and it's tough, because it is a budgetary concern. If we're not there, we're not bringing in that additional funding, but it's a catch-22, because if we do accept more, then we become overcrowded. So we will look, you know, to replace certainly all the students we lose going into grade nine, and then we'll see what other spaces are available. I can update you at future meetings for sure.
Okay.
The MSBA update, so we have selected PMA as our OPM for the project. An OPM narrative was submitted to the MSBA, and we attended the, Gary, Keith and I, the school building committee chair, we attended the OPM review panel virtually on May 6th. PMA did as well, and they did a presentation at that meeting. It went very well. They had some good questions. I think they appreciated the process that we went through. On May 10th, the MSBA sent information to West Bridgewater, so David Gagny has to sign off on that, and then we'll fully affirm the OPM contract with PMA. They're already moving forward. They sent the draft of the RFS for the designer/architect to me today, so I reviewed that, but they're in charge of doing that now, which is a nice thing, so I'm no longer in charge of writing that RFS. We have a, our next steps are, we have a selection subcommittee meeting on May 21st. That's the same group of people that were on the OPM selection subcommittee, the designer and architect. We have a full meeting of the school building committee on May 28th, and at that meeting, they will approve the RFS for posting, and then we'll follow the same timeline similar to the OPM. Unfortunately, when you look down the road and you look at their timeline, we won't be contracting with the architect/designer until the end of August, just following that timeline. So it's, it's moving forward, but it's at the pace that's kind of designed for us. Nature's Classroom, Mr. Lehman. I did go up there for the first day, and it was actually great for me to see them arriving and some of the introductory things. I haven't seen that in quite a while, so I just want to say before Mr. Lehman says, huge amount of credit to our staff that go. You know, seeing it for many years, it is, you know, it's, the cabins are nicer, newer for sure, but they, which is a benefit, but it's a working, they're on 24/7, not quite seven, but they do an amazing job, and I always want to thank them, and the other chaperones and co, because it's a lot of work for them, and we've got great kids. It's a lean.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Nature's Classroom, my next one. I really urge all the districts that they don't participate in Nature's Classroom, the classroom can really consider it. I think it's really extra special for all the schools at the end of that sixth grade. Where the students really, their relationships. How much longer we play with each other as a high school. Also, I'm glad we have no cell phone, no watch, no TV. And I think that's more important than ever than today. But it was, it was really my good best one. Yeah. They really, Nature's Classroom keeps up with their game and the activities that they do. Which is nice seeing the students dissecting the squid. Quickly sit, sit about to open the fire. They just really all, all the way around. Really had a great time. Echo us from the bubble and how you have good news to the staff and chaperones. We're on 24/7 all the way there. But again, we have awesome kids, so it was a great time. And we're not, we're just not 95 degrees.
Weather was a lot better this year. Thank you.
Academic Showcase, Miss Yana.
So we held our academic showcase last Thursday and pre-K to 12 were represented. We had a pretty good turnout by families, staff and students. We had over 25 presentations. I think one of the highlights was Salamander in the bucket. And I just want to say thank you to all who presented, the staff and the students. They did an amazing job. It's not easy for little preschool kids to stay down there for an hour and a half and stay engaged, but they did.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's such a, we, we, oh, sorry. We, um, see I'm lacking. We, we always see these great things going on and it's, it's great when the administrators will say like, hey, show that off, show that off. Because they, they do great things every single day. So it's, uh, it's great to see it all together and I love hearing the kids. They're so proud, they're so excited about being here. So thank you to the administrators, thanks Deb for your hard work. It's, uh, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I think it was a lot of positive energy. The kids were.
I just want to say that Juju was so great.
It was, it was really great. I appreciated the map too, having the, the list of what was there to be seen. So we didn't miss anything, so thank you for that.
All right, you can stay on up. We're discussing raising multicultural kids. Again, a great addition to the Howard School. I think it's something that is, the timing is perfect and it's a real wonderful program. And just want to give you some more information on it. I can, we can hook some, can we try? No, we can, want to try and plug in and plug, come, bring it on over. There you can pull a chair up. This is a Chromebook, but which.
That, that looks like the same.
I know. Give it a shot.
Should be good.
Look at that.
Sweet.
All right. Now let's see.
Nope, you're good. Okay, we're out, we go.
Maybe I can do, but it keeps going in and out though. Maybe if I. Maybe sorry. Be with the tech guru and the crew.
All right.
Is it a Google slide? Because you might be able to share it and then.
If you share it with them, we can.
Come on, Mina.
Yeah.
All right, I am ready.
Uh, so M Bodwell.
B O D W O.
At W Bridgewater dot com, or actually the easier. Oh, okay, so sorry. Yeah, I'm plugged, that's important. What do I say?
That's fine. M E L L.
Well, you are signing here?
Yeah.
Well, while we wait, I think we can actually skip ahead and do the CPAC update if you're willing to jump ahead.
No problem.
We'll check that off.
The mission of West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy and opportunities for education and community building. Spring is one of our favorite times of the year as it is a time that we recognize and appreciate the educators who do so much for our children. At the end of this month, Inclusion Matters will award our fifth annual Grant of Gratitude to at least one West Bridgewater teacher, therapist, staff person or administrator in recognition of their inclusive efforts in the classroom, school or district. We need your help. Tell us who should be celebrated for going above and beyond in fostering an inclusive classroom. Visit our website for more details and submit your nomination by this Friday, May 17th. Also this month, we'll be accepting donations as part of our 2024 graduation seat raffle. For $20.24, you can enter to win four priority seats at this year's graduation. Entry forms and donations are also due by this Friday, May 17th, to the Middle Senior High School Main Office. And the winner will be announced early the following week. Don't miss this chance to win a great view of every moment with this year's graduates. Congratulations, class of 2024. And the words of Marco Bizzari, diversity and inclusion, which are the real grounds for creativity, must remain at the center of what we do. For more information about West Bridgewater CPAC and this past year's events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you, Dave. I know that Grant of Gratitude is something that Inclusion Matters, the, the BBC PAC really looks forward to. Celebrating a teacher, administrator, just a staff member who really goes above and beyond to include all students of all abilities. So get those nominations in by Friday.
How's it coming?
And it keeps, all right, that's, hope it comes, but then it disappears. So let's hope.
I tried clicking on it.
Let's hope. Oh, okay, all right, here we go.
Fingers crossed.
Well, um, thank you so much for having us come and meet with you today. We're really excited about our partnership with West Bridgewater. I'm Kelly Lamb. I'm one of the co-founders of Raising Multicultural Kids. With me is Denise Lane, she's the other co-founder. And Kendria here is our program director. So just to give you a little bit of history about our organization, me and my husband actually created our family through adoption. We adopted three girls. I'm just going to keep going Denise, hopefully stays up. This is my youngest right here. Her name's Katerina, but she prefers to be called Kitty. So Kitty entered Easton Public Schools in 2018 and actually had three negative experiences because of her skin color. And so we began to engage with the district around ways to support Kitty. After the first incident, she all of a sudden saw herself as something that was gross and disgusting. She refused to take her coat off for two weeks. She didn't want anyone to see that she was, had brown skin. And so both my husband and I are white. So we said to her, you know, mommy and daddy don't know what it's like to have these experiences based on our skin color. What would you like us to ask the school to do? What would you like in terms of support? Because the school handled the incident very well. Even the principal reached out to the family and said, can you have some conversations with your child at home around skin color? And we were very happy with how they, they handled it, but she still felt a disconnect from her community, right? And so supporting students is a little bit harder to do. So we asked her and she said, I want a black teacher to come into my classroom. We're like, okay, what do you want that black teacher to do? And she said, we'll stand in a circle and hold hands and then everyone will know it's okay that I have brown skin. Right, so at five, she already understood the power of representation, which is amazing. And so we went to our district and we said, hey, this is what she wants, can you do it? And at that point, we found out our teach, our, our district had no black teachers, right? And so it was not a problem our district was going to solve because it's a statewide problem, it's a nationwide problem. So we actually began to engage with the school on a higher level. So we started speaking with the superintendent at that point, who was very supportive. And then she had another incident on the playground and then she got the N-word from another kindergartner. And it just seemed to keep happening. And so at that time in 2018, the superintendent had put together an advisory council of people that were made up of, from different groups that are often targeted by hate to advise her in this work. And so it was the first of its kind that I'm aware of, which was really, really great that she did this. I know many districts do it now. And so she had asked us to be on that council representing kids of color. And the reason why was because she had no other families that were volunteering to engage in the conversation. And we said, well, we really don't feel like that space we should occupy since we're white, but we will try and help you recruit families. And so we did, we reached out to other families. We got about 30 families that wanted to engage in the conversation. And at first it began as this email dialogue. I like to say I sent my list of 10 demands and our superintendent is amazing. She wrote back and it turns out the school is working on all of them, right? They just weren't problems our district was going to solve because they were statewide problems, nationwide problems. And so we really began to realize the depth of the issues and decided to form a nonprofit to help bring resources into our community and expertise into our community so that we can begin to talk to the kids at that age level around differences. In those, that group of 30 families, every single family there, their child had had a racial incident prior to third grade. So it was happening to all of our families, it was happening early. And it's not something that is talked about as much as it is at the middle school level or the high school level. And so we knew we had to really focus first in on those early grades. And so we did. Denise, can you go to the next slide? Our group decided to come together with the purpose and mission to increase racial and cultural competency in communities through deep engagement with the schools. So we started off in the schools with educational experts and local citizens. We also realized these conversations have to happen at home as well. And so we do do some community work as well. But it's really truly our mission to ensure that each child sees, sees themselves modeled in curriculum, in teachers and in leadership roles and gains a greater self-esteem and respect for others. And so all of our programs are designed with that mission in, in mind. And so our first program was really, we call it Kitty's Program, the Diversity in Classroom Leadership and Literature Program. That's a program we're going to dive into today, is working with a diverse group of college students and adults that are looking for a second career to have them go into the classroom and read books on differences, really. So they go in there and they talk about culture, language, race, socioeconomic status, family structure and people with different abilities. And really create these conversations around differences so that students can begin to understand that this is normal. There's a lot of diversity in the world, have appropriate language to describe differences. But also really to truly help them understand that whatever difference they have, because we all have differences, right? That it is a good thing and that adds value to our communities. Then we also do some work at the middle school and high school level. Really that's more around empowering student voices. We do run through some curriculum with them, but then in the end it turns into project-based learning where they're, they're picking the topic that they want to advocate on. For example, last year, we had a lot of the students interested in mental health. So they did some work on mental health in their middle school. But that really is, program is specific in hall that we do that. And then we, in order to really think about what it is that we want to teach to the students, we created our own standards. So we call them our Diversity, Civics and Advocacy Modules. They're based off of the state standards. We looked at the state standards with our educational experts and some licensed teachers from Eastern Public Schools and really looked at what was, where the standards good at and really where was it lacking? And we felt like in those early grades, they were lacking in the, in the justice in action piece of it. They did a good job with introducing kids to different cultures. But it, really looking at the standards, like when do we tell kids that people are sometimes treated differently because of differences? And when do we tell them what to do about it? Like, how do you get help if this is happening to you? How do you help a friend? And so we created our standards really around that piece of, you know, letting kids know, yes, people can be treated different because of differences, but differences are actually a good thing and here's what you, you can do if you need help. And then we also have our community-based program. So knowing that we can't serve every district that came to us, especially after the murder of George Floyd, we had a lot that were coming to us. We created a virtual bedtime book club. So we have a diverse group of BSU college students that run that. But every Monday and Wednesday, families can log on and listen to the, the diversity leaders there, read the books and engage with the kids on the different topics that we cover. We also have an Underground Railroad project that we are working with student interns around pulling through local stories from New Bedford up to Boston around the Underground Railroad so that we can start creating curriculum around that local history because we just feel like the students connect differently to local history. I mean, it feels different when you drive by a house and you knew that they participated in, you know, helping freedom seekers. And so we have that project ongoing right now. And then we also do community events and partnerships just to get out there into the community, let them know what we're about and what we're doing in ways that they can help. So I went, already went through a little bit about the, the problem. So over 90% of teachers in Massachusetts are white, where our student population is 55% white. And so there's a big gap there. Nationally, it's 87% white and 45% white student population. So there's a gap nationally as well. But it has a negative impact on students. So we know through a lot of research that for our Black and Brown students, that if they have teachers that look like them, they're more likely to feel more connected to their school community, be recommended for honors programs, graduate high school and even attend college. So it has an impact on their academic trajectory for life. For our white students, we know that white people, in general, about over 70% of white people only associate with other white people. And that really has a lot to do with the way that our country has been set up over time, right? Like our communities are still segregated, even though legal segregation is, has ended. And so because of that, and, and sort of this lack of diversity within our communities, it makes people more prone to believing misinformation and stereotypes. If you don't have any experience of other people, you're more likely to believe, you know, and sort of the single story, as we call it, of, of what you hear in the media and other places. And so it's also harmful to students to not interact with that diversity. And of course, you know, our, the country is changing, our demographics are shifting. When students go out into the workforce eventually, they're going to have the, I mean, this is the most diverse student population we've ever had, right? So they're going to be entering the most diverse workforce that we've ever had, but also the most global economy. So they need to know how to navigate differences and they need to understand different cultures in order to be successful in, in the future workforce. So we often like to tell parents, like, this isn't just about your child being inclusive or being kind. This really truly is a workforce skill that they're developing as well. So our solution is to work with Black and Brown college students that have an interest in working with kids. And our, and our hope is that if they're not an education major or a social work major, that they're kind of trying to figure out what they want to do, that working with us, they might become interested in becoming a teacher. So our, our, our hope is to also inspire these college students to work in a school system. But we pay them at a rate about similar to the paraprofessionals to go into the classrooms and do the lessons that we've designed and create these conversations with the students. And you, like I said, you know, this also serves as workforce development for them, hoping that we can help develop them into educators or for some of our students to work as social workers in the, in the school. But it also serves as workforce development for current classroom teachers because they, they see this curriculum modeled so that they can hopefully then take some of the lessons that they like and continue to do them well beyond our presence in the classroom. One of the, the difficulties in doing the work that we do is, you know, a lot of the reason why school curriculum has focused on white middle-class families is because of the publishing industry and what books have been available. So this is from 2018. At that time, 50% of children's books were focused on white, middle-class characters. And then 27% on animals. If you look at the remaining 23%, so less than even animal characters, that's all other races. Now we're starting to see a shift in diverse books being published in 2020, but it's actually only improved it 1% so far. So there's still some ways to go. And of course, this is only one of the topics that we talk about in the classroom. If you look at, you know, socioeconomic status and, and showing different socioeconomic statuses in a positive light, it's even harder to find books, looking at, you know, family structure. So trying to find books on grandparents, raising grandchildren, and we have about 3 million in the US doing that. It can be really hard to find books. So it can be even harder depending on the topic that we're looking at. So we spend a lot of time researching and looking at books. Want to do the next one? And then once we pick the book lists out for the year, we work with these licensed teachers in order to create the curriculum. So on, on the left is our Justine. Justine does the older grade program, so our, our first through sixth grade. And then Amy, she's a teacher at Randolph Public Schools, a kindergarten teacher, and she does the pre-KK program. And then Lauren, she's our instructional strategist and she also is a director of special education. So she also looks at it through the lens of diverse learners so that we can scaffold their lessons as well. Kendria is our program director. She comes to us not only with a master's in education, but also 17 years of experience doing workforce development of youth. And so she does a lot of the programming and help around, in the training around our diversity leaders. So this is repeating, I don't know why it's, yeah. So the benefit to the students, I know a lot of you probably have been doing this for a long time, so you understand the benefit of multicultural curriculum to students. But just for anyone that's listening, you know, our goal is really to create a safe and happy learning environment for everyone and hopefully reduce incidents like my daughter had experienced. But of course, we know that we're not going to stop everything. And so we really focus on that advocacy piece. How can we empower students with ways to get help? And then we look at building social emotional skills. A lot of our curriculum takes into consideration the, the theory of mind, which is really thinking about students developing those perspective-taking skills, which is the foundation of empathy. And of course, we know that exposure to multicultural curriculum and learning about different cultures makes students more creative and better problem solvers. It also, we reinforce the democratic values of good citizenship. And then of course, as I mentioned before, we really want to prepare students for the future workforce. And for staff, I mean, this is a great opportunity to, to see curriculum modeled in your own classroom. I mean, when do teachers really get to sit back and observe? They do so much. But also we can offer professional development to teachers for participating in the program. If they opt in to do two lessons that we've designed for them, they can get 15 PDP points for, for their participation for observing and doing the lessons, which is great because a lot of times you have to spend 15 hours of work outside of the classroom to get 15 PDPs. And then we hope that they also connect with our diversity leaders and develop good relationships. So if our diversity leaders end up graduating and looking for a job and you have an open position, they'll want to come and work in your school district. So we hope that we can help you in your hiring practices as well. The school, if, depending on the program that you pick, will, over five years could be exposed to 50 to 100 different books. Diverse books with the teachers really seeing how we model these conversations. The potential to, you know, diversify staff, as I had mentioned. But we also help schools, schools will reach out to us and say, hey, we had this issue come up. Would you mind doing this one-off presentation or coming in to talk to students? So we are there to help you with whatever needs you identify. We will, we will partner with you in whatever way we can to really make sure that all kids feel included and safe and supported. I'm not sure what's going on with the, why it keeps cycling through. Oh, okay. So just to give you a little background on how we prepare our diversity leaders, they receive a lot of training before even entering into the classroom. And the training on the, the topics they receive are culturally responsive teaching and best practices, multicultural education, mentorship, trauma-informed practice, lesson planning and development and instructional strategies, which is a lot around classroom management, but also diverse learning styles. And then they receive training throughout the program. So, you know, a lot of our cost is actually not even the diversity leaders in the classroom, but in the training that we give them. And they also receive a one-hour video every week on the lesson, as well as a lesson plan that they have to review weekly before they go into the classroom to teach that, that week's lesson. So our guiding principles are really, so like I said, we have our modules that break down the individual objectives that we teach. And we actually do teacher training on our modules as well. We've done it for the MTA, we've done it for Bridgewater State University. But really for the, this purpose is the only thing you really need to know, our guiding principles. These are principles we pull through all, all of our curriculum. And it's really kind of more like our culture statement. You know, we believe that encouraging children to be curious about themselves and others builds self-confidence, but also empathy. And exposing children to different family structures, skin colors, languages, abilities, all of that. It really widens a, a student's worldview and also builds perspective-taking skills, like I mentioned before. And so providing children with appropriate language to describe differences and harmful treatment really gives them the advocacy skills that we're trying to build. Helping children, so my eyes are so bad since I turned 40, so I can't even really read that. I'm trying to do it from memory. Yeah, helping children understand our country's history and how it impacts people today. It develops critical thinking skills so that students can identify and deconstruct systems of harm. And then teaching children really how, or the species, so it, teaching children how species survival is dependent on biological diversity is also really a great way to talk about the importance of differences. A lot of times we have science and math teachers ask us, how do we do D and I in, you know, science or math? And in science, it's very easy if you can talk about, you know, genetics, the diversity of genetics and adaptation. And so we feel like that's really important as well. And then teaching children with how to share what they know, that also builds advocacy skills. And of course, representation matters. We don't just mean in terms of exposing students to, you know, all the different cultures and people out there, but also the diversity within groups. So for example, we like to talk about, say, the, the motto minority myth around Asians being really good at math, right? So a lot of times we'll have a teacher say, is this a good book to use? And we will say, it depends, right? We need to see what other books you're using because if this is the only book you're using and it reinforces this single story, maybe it's not the best book choice. But if you have other books that highlight different Asian characters, then yeah, that's totally fine, right? So you really want to show inter-group diversity as well, not just, you know, a, a bunch of different cultures. And so we think about that when we're balancing out our curriculum as well. This is what a typical lesson plan looks like for our diversity leader. I always like to show this to school committees so you get an understanding of really the depth of the training that they get. And so you can see at the top, they'll have a link for the, the slideshow that they're going to have. They'll have an essential question. We also have, you know, content literacy objectives. We, we are aligned with DESI standards, so we have state standards that we cover as well, as well as SEL standards. And then typically they have their objectives. They have some before reading questions, some during reading questions, and then some after reading questions to really create the conversation we want to have them create. Then they have some sort of brain break or movement break before they go into a deeper discussion on the topic. And then an activity that can. discussion on the topic, and then an activity that connects to that deeper discussion to really help pull through the lesson. So that's a typical structure of our lessons. We do have, if you ever want to go on our website and check it out, you can see an hour lesson that we condensed into about eight and a half minutes. It's in a lower grade, though, I think it's either first or second grade, where I know we're gonna be at the Howard School, it's for older grades. So I figured this clip might be a little bit more appropriate, and it's only a minute and a half, too. But this will give you a good idea of what it's like for our diversity leaders to be in the classroom.
I know a book we're gonna be talking about, I have to walk.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah? You guys are pretty smart, huh?
I got the picture.
All right. Well, that's a great transition, we're all gonna get started, I guess.
What do you think's going on? Hmm, yes.
He doesn't want to walk all the way to the bed. Why, there's another way. She could scoot the water.
So we're gonna be exploring a type of music, maybe you guys heard of it before, it's called Afrobeat. Afrobeat is a type of music that is popular in Africa, and it's becoming popular in many other countries, just like the United States. And our journey begins full of song. We must recycle, reduce, reuse. One more time, we must recycle, reduce, reuse. We must recycle, reduce, reuse. That's it! Good job, guys!
And one of you guys reminded me what an activist is.
Is it someone who stands up for rights?
Right, so I agree.
And imagine black American people.
Right, so I agree.
I love the girl that's like, yeah, women rights. Yeah, so that's, you know, just a little snippet. Like I said, there's an eight and a half minute clip on our website if you want to check out more. But really, what you can expect from us is, we'll go to the next slide, is that, you know, we will have consistent communication with you, the administration, the teachers, and the parents, and I'll show you a little bit about what our communication looks like in the next few slides. But also, well-trained and enthusiastic diversity leaders, as you can see in that video, you know, they love what they do, they love being with the kids and having fun. And then engaging lessons and activities, and also an openness to feedback. Like I said before, you know, this work started in Easton with a lot of help from the Easton Public School teachers, but then as we've expanded into other districts and getting more feedback and learning more about the teachers' needs, we've been able to really develop this program into something that I think serves classroom teachers very well. And that's all through their feedback. And so what we typically do when we start, and we actually already did this in your district, is we put together a little flyer on the program that gives a little introduction to parents about the program, but then also provide a picture of their diversity leader, as well as a little blurb on, on that leader, so some fun facts about them. So that gets sent home. Before we start the programming with the district, we send over our book list for the years with our themes that we teach to. So we always do identity, community, and advocacy, those three themes. But for the older kids, we also add on persistence and growth mindset. But then you can see the books that we use to teach those themes, and that way, the district has a chance to preview all the books before we begin developing our lesson plans on the books. And that way, if they say, no, and I would really like this book, or don't like that book, then we can make changes before the program starts. And then for this pilot, though, since we're piloting here, the book list was already chosen, but we picked five books for your school to test out. And so we wanted to try and get one in each category, identity, community, advocacy, growth mindset, and persistence. And so you can see, these are the books that we're doing and the dates that we are doing them in your district. And so that was sent out to everyone already as well. We typically put together a curriculum map every month before that we're gonna do the lessons. We send this to teachers, so teachers can put this in the newsletters and send it home to parents, so parents know, you know, what's the essential question for the month, what books are we using to teach those questions? And then we have additional questions that break down from the essential question, and then also a little blurb on, you know, what we're gonna do with the lesson, so parents are fully informed before we're in the classroom. Each week, teachers get a big email like this that has like all the information they need. So it's a book, you know, a little bit of a summary of the book, as well as all the PowerPoint presentations they'll need to have access to, and the DESI standards, and then our diversity civics and advocacy principles that we'll be covering with that lesson. And then, at the end of every lesson, we have a table talk card that we send home with the kids. So that way, you know, if you have children like mine, my oldest, my middle child tells me everything, but my oldest, if I say, you know, what'd you do today? She's like, I don't know. Like, what'd you have for lunch? I don't know. You don't know what you ate for lunch? So this, this way, if a parent has a child like mine, they have a question they can start with, and then some details on the back that help guide the conversation. And then sometimes, if we have good resources to share outside of that, that the parents might be interested in, we put a low QR code on the card as well, so they can get more information if they're interested. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
I thought it was a great presentation, thank you. I guess, I mean, what is our, so what is the, so we're gonna pilot, we're gonna pilot the month of May, and then I guess what are we looking to do, I guess, after one point of May?
So we're working.
Our goals, I guess, for this.
We're trying to find funding.
Yep.
And Denise has been helpful with that. I wrote a grant to Bluestone Bank, and then there are other options we can look at, too. The cultural committee.
Cultural council.
Cultural council.
We've written grants to the Mass Cultural Council, as well as the Easton Cultural Council specifically. And because our activities are, you know, our impact activities that are associated with the book to deepen the knowledge, they tend to give us grants to assist with the program. And then Debbie talked about using them, like, if teachers choose the professional development part of the program, maybe use them from Title I funding for those classrooms.
Title II.
Title II. I'm sorry, Title II?
Title II.
Title II, that's cool. Is Title I bad, after I missed?
No, 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 Title I's just a different bucket.
And then we're happy to write joint grants with Debbie because we feel that, you know, that will help when community organizations come together with schools and write grants that tends to be, you know, well-sold. And then this is for grade six?
Four, five.
Four, five, six.
Four, five and six, okay.
So that, those pictures up there were lessons from last week. They were doing the Arabic quilt, and the kids were truly engaged. The left picture's in fifth grade, and then the right picture was in fourth grade. And I was talking to the fourth graders, and they were showing me their quilt pieces, and one of them had some German, "Welcome." And I said, oh, that's German. And they looked at me, how did you know that? I said, I don't know, I just took a lucky guess. But they, I mean, and these are some of the kids that typically don't interact, they're not as engaged. And they were fully engaged. Like, the week before, when I was in there, I was amazed. So what I've, the last two weeks, what I've seen is, it's truly amazing. The kids are fully engaged. We get that feedback in pretty much every district, that they see students that don't normally participate in the conversation, classroom conversations, they see them start to come out of their shell and participate. We did a book on dyslexia just a few weeks ago in a district, and...
That's the last book that we're doing in this district as well?
Yeah, and, you know, we've even had parents reaching out to us, talking about how this has changed their child's perception of themselves, and they were so excited to see all the famous people with dyslexia and think about the possibilities of their future. And so we get that feedback a lot because, you know, our students are so diverse, there's so many things that you, looking at a person, you wouldn't know, right? And so our curriculum touches upon so many things that it's connecting with students in ways that even we get surprised by sometimes.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, thanks Debbie for your attention. I think this is, we tried very culturally blind in the district, but it's doing things like this, to ask what's going on in that district, and the best of our kids and our staff, all of our families and council. We're excited, we're excited to see what we can do with this.
Thank you. And it helps us meet our mission statement of providing, preparing kids for a global and diverse 21st century.
I'm really looking forward to seeing how the pilot works out and hopefully securing funding, because I think it's important to start it earlier.
Yes.
That's what we thought.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really important. You know, it's no secret, we live in a very white community, and we have had some issues of race and, and, you know, just hate. And so I think it's really important that we start teaching it early. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All I was gonna say is, I spoke to Principal Dela, a lot of that, and now she's in agreement that it's something we'd like throughout the school as we continue to increase alignment. And that basically, we would, our fun run, our goal, we would put as a request would be RMK. So I think it's meaningful, and we need to, don't really need to think any other ideas to put down for PTO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ready for information on my goals?
Sure.
All right. So for this school year, I submitted four goals at the start of the year. I have created for the school committee a Google folder, once again, with evidence for you, some related to the standards and some related to the four goals. Within the Google folder, I did create subfolders, so it's not just one long list of stuff.
Appreciated.
It's, some may be applicable to more than one, so, but if they, I did that, I try to put them into both. If you have questions or want more information, please just let me know. And so I'll give an overview of the goals and sample of some of the achievements, but I'd be remiss by not thanking our administrative team and all the educators in West Bridgewater. It's truly a team effort. A lot of things I'll talk about were started within the schools and supported by the administrators and all their hard work, so we work collaboratively. So the, I'm not gonna read through each goal, I'll just talk about some of the information I provided here. This is not a complete and thorough list of all the things, I'll put more information in, but again, some things I wanted to share. So the first goal was a district improvement goal, and has to do with the elementary school building project. So throughout the year, attending all school building committee and subcommittee meetings and creating the agendas for those meetings, worked to create a feasibility study and schematic design presentation for the public meeting we had this fall, created the RFS, 142-page document that was needed for the OPM search, served on the OPM Subcommittee for interviews, created OPM, the OPM narrative for the MSBA submission, providing hopefully continual communications through newsletters, social media, and the website, and talking about it every coffee hour, our status for the building project, and trying to solicit some information or questions from people who are attending, completing all MSBA-relevant paperwork during the eligibility period and throughout the process, and constant communication with Carly, who's our MSBA rep. Again, we're moving forward, we are in the initial stages. We will be in this feasibility study period for well over a year. At the end of it, which will be January of '26, I think, is when we're looking to go to the town for a town vote. So lots of stuff, lots of documents will be produced, lots of information will be shared. And I think one of the most exciting things, I think, with PMA is we want to make sure we're getting information out to the, to the community, the families. I think it's important for them to know where we're going, what, what our vision is. We'll be having vision sessions with our staff and with our families and people in the community, because like this building, we want this also to be a community building. It doesn't work if it's just a building that's used 180 days a year, you know, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We want to have gym space that's available, meeting space that's available, having a community side and an academic side like we have here, where it's great, you can keep hearing the cheering out there, I'm not sure what they're yelling and cheering about, but it's great to have things going on throughout.
I think they have a video feed of our meeting.
They're live streaming, they're cheering, like the girl, yeah. So a lot, a lot's been going on, and a lot will continue with the project. A second goal is a student learning goal, has to do instructional leadership and student achievement, that's why we're here. We're here, you know, obviously, education and student achievement is very important, along with their social emotional health, but supporting that throughout the district. So discussing instructional leadership and student achievement during monthly admin meetings, we're always talking about things that are important in terms of achievement. District walkthroughs, I'll be honest, we started the year better than we finished the year, but we had our, we would set up, the problem is, in some of the buildings, I'd like to have our admin meetings in other buildings. Sometimes it's hard to find any spaces in some of the building, I know it's very true with the Howard School, and Roselle was, we did a couple there, we would do our walkthroughs at that time. Individual meetings this year, I tried hard to schedule them all in the buildings and not in the offices, so I, we could meet and then walk around and see what's going on in the classrooms. Data collection, the admin team and our teachers have done a really good job of collecting data for MCAS, STAR, and DIBELS, and I got to sit in on a couple meetings with the elementary level when they're going over DIBELS, and I was very impressed with the level of detail that they're going through in charting student progress. Regular meetings with our Director of Curriculum, talk about student achievement, talking with the admin team about most effective use of our coordinators here at the Middle Senior High School and our elementary ITLs, and review MCAS performance in meetings to discuss action plan in grades three to 10. One of the highlights was at the middle school, we talked and met with them about some changes we wanted to make. You'll see those agendas shared in the evidence. Third goal was professional practice goal, implementation of new programs. We do continue to have, especially at the elementary, but also at the middle senior high school, the illustrious math, new programs. And we know with that comes a lot of hard work and efforts by our staff. It's, when we talk about RMK and lesson planning, they're, they're creating lessons, they're using common planning time, they're working hard to make sure these lessons are well-developed and helpful. And what's great is, we've seen an increase, we talked today at our admin meeting about where, what module they got to last year, and the progress we've already seen this year and year two, which I think is a credit to all involved. So we prepared a professional development calendar to support staff development, worked hard over the past few years to make sure this is updated, and we're getting the PD that we need during our half-day times. Monthly full admin team check-in to make sure we're checking in on the progress of the PD, complete walkthroughs and looking for implementation. Recently, I was at the Howard School, we toured a bunch of fifth-grade classrooms, it was awesome to see them, not only using the interactive whiteboards, but also to see them teaching the same lesson at maybe slightly different parts, you know, but it's the same lesson, and they're all having real genuine good conversations using the Witten Wisdom curriculum. Witten Wisdom integrating into the middle school, which is new this year, so there's been a definite learning curve in the middle school, similar to what we saw at the elementary last year, but I think it's important that, you know, they're growing, they're learning, and we just keep asking, what do you need, what do you need, what do you need, what can we help you with? So I think this has been a growing year, and next year, they'll do even better. Meeting with the admin team to discuss our two DESI consultants and the benefits that we've seen with them and their planning. Again, the Witten Wisdom module goals and progress, all showing significant progress. We have a PD calendar already kind of in place for next year, and we'll be working to figure out a planning group to make sure that's finalized by the end of the school year, and supporting common planning time in the schools. I think it's very beneficial to have that time to talk about what they're doing and how they're doing it, and sharing what's going well, and have each other for supports. And the fourth goal is our social emotional learning and culture of belonging. Again, very important, if kids don't feel good, they don't feel supportive, they don't, aren't doing well with their mental health, they're not gonna be able to learn. So this goes, plays right in with the academic achievement. Checking on the SEL teams and progress in the schools, I think they've done, continue to do a very good job promoting SEL and positive programs in newsletters, coffee hours, and on social media, promoting core values of wildcat pride in the schools, building-based student success team and RTI teams in the school to make sure we're addressing not only their academic needs, but also their social emotional and behavioral needs. Morning visits this year, I've tried at least once a month, sometimes more, to be at the schools in the morning. It's, it's a lot of fun. They're definitely more excited at the elementary than they are at the secondary, but that's the nature of being in so early, but I love being at the schools and greeting the kids. The SEL PD opportunities through Mass Partnership for Youth, we, that does a really good job of sending out opportunities. Culture responsive teaching, professional development for our staff, I think we've recently had a couple really good ones here at the elementary level. We had a full half-day SEL day PD for our staff. We had a full half-day S E L day, P D for our staff in February, which we've done the last couple of years, and it's been building-specific, where they've done things for the S E L of the staff, so we want to recognize that. Support of S E L and other guest speakers, we've had some good ones at the Howard School, middle senior high school, we have R M K coming in, which I think is helpful, and checking on the programs, continually checking in, how are we doing? So those are the goals, there's, again, you have some more evidence and things, but I want to just give the highlights.
Thank you. So you have not shared the folder with us yet?
Correct, not yet.
Yeah, we originally, last meeting spoke about 5:17, so this Friday.
Correct.
So take your time this week. And then for us, getting our individual evals to me by 5:24, and I will compile them and get it back to you all for 5:20, 5:31, so that if there are anything, if there's anything I missed, anything you want me to add back in or comment on more, I can make those revisions before our meeting that Monday. And then one thing that I did want to comment on, you know, you and I had discussed, most of you know I participate in the evaluation process on the other end of it, that I, you know, am in a school, and one of the things that I don't have to do is provide a ton of evidence. I provide evidence, but for the first two indicators, most of it's covered through observation. So that was something kind of in my mindset when we were revamping the subcommittees, that for this year, of course, you're going to give us lots and lots and lots of evidence, but next year, hopefully you won't have to do as much of an info dump, because through our work on the subcommittees, we can gather that evidence ourself through observation, which will just make it a more informed evaluation for next year.
Perfect.
All right. So that brings us to the student representative update. Do we have an update over there?
We have an update.
Do we have a student volunteer?
Hearing none, not hearing any volunteers.
Well, it was written, I don't want to, I want to make sure we highlight the work.
All right. At Spring Street School, our school adjustment counselor, Mrs. Mo, Ms. Moquette, arranged a special visit from Kiss, a therapy dog, and he was able to visit with a few classrooms. We can't wait for his next visit. The kindergarten classes have been visiting the field festival last month. First, they had a great time visiting Wardberry Farm in Sharon, where they were able to help them plant and see some farm animals and take care of it. They ended the visit with some free time on the big playground. Thank you to all the parents who volunteered to chaperone. Recently, each class walked over to the public library and received their first library card and chose a book to bring home. Spring Street School highlighted Scribble Day, which is based on the book, I'm Not Just a Scribble, by Diane Mulver. This book had a great moral of all kindness and acceptance while encouraging children to create art regardless of their aptitude ability. The preschool and kindergarten students created their own scribble characters and may also present at the academic showcase. Rozelle McDonald, grade one students recognized Arbor Day by having a presentation and receiving their own tree to plant. The purchase of these trees goes to, goes to a scholarship fund for students entering into the arborist field. A big thank you to John Ames, the ground specialist for the town of Easton for organizing. Grade one also presented their career day show. Each student shared what they wanted to do when they grew up. The group was full of first responders, teachers, professional athletes, coaches, and even a superintendent, who with grades, have so many parents and parents. Grade three, um, grade three students participated in their annual wax museum project, as part of third grade social studies curriculum, students research a famous person with Massachusetts ties. They work at home to find all the information about their person and then come to school dressed as them to present in a wax museum setup. They present their information in first person, essentially becoming their character. It is truly history coming to life. Last Friday, students from some of the first and second grade classes were able to enjoy a yoga class with Ms. Christine from Liverpool Yoga Company. They warmed up with yoga, yoga dance, learned multiple poses, and meditated to the secret garden. We will hear her, we will see her again in a few weeks. Thank you P T O for funding this special event. Howard, the Howard School has been working diligently on their app cast and will be completed with their testing this week. Woo-hoo! Grade six students attended a school-based dance the last week of April and danced all night long. Grade six students will also be visiting the middle senior high school on Thursday, May 30, from 8:00 to 11:00, to explore all that middle senior high school has to offer. Students from the Howard School Band participated in the spring concert this past week and continued to show their dedication to the instruments they are learning to play. Way to go. On May 31, the Howard School will hold a school-wide field day full of physical activity, collaborative games, and fun. And finally, the Howard School is happy to announce that they are partnering with R M K, raising youth cultural children, to continue our role of providing the Howard School students the skills and values needed for success in a diverse and global society of the 21st century. And at the middle school, students dressed up and looked fabulous for their semi-formal Friday night. Students danced and sang the night away and had a ton of fun. Seniors held their annual pop parade, they did a great job decorating their cars and parading to the elementary schools, followed by a crockout at the middle senior high school. And the academic showcase was a success. Staff and students did an amazing job showing off what they had been doing in their classes. It was great to see the community come together.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a busy time of year. All right, so moving on, is the C P A C update, which Dave has already done. From there, we're going to policies. So opening policies for this month. Move to open the following policies for review at next month's meeting. H A, negotiations goals. H B, negotiations legal status. H F, school committee negotiating agents. K F, community use of school facilities. K F E, use of athletic fee schedule. K F dash R, community use of school facilities. K F dash R one, guidelines for use of school property. And K F dash R two, guidelines for use of athletic spaces. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
So the H ers, we're looking to get through those, there's not too many. And then the K F policies, they're tied into some of the ones that we had opened last month that we're going to try to hold, so we can look at them more holistically on the use of facilities. We had opened up the forms, since there's the new online submission, but then we realized that there were these other policies that were out there within our index that we wanted kind of just look at as, as holistically and, and all as one, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Nope, we're just cruising through them. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of policies. Move to adopt the following policies. G C J, professional teacher status. G C O, evaluation of professional staff. G D A, support staff positions. G D B, support staff contracts and compensation plans. G D O, evaluation of support staff. G C I A, philosophy of staff development. G C K, professional staff assignments and transfers. G C Q F, suspension and dismissal of professional staff members. G C R D, tutoring for pay, and J E B, entrance age. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yep, so there are quite a few policies that M A S E has, has on their index that we do not have on ours, so I'm just going to go through those quick, they're in the folder as adopt. G C J, professional teacher status. This basically outlines superintendent responsibilities regarding teachers' employment within the first three years. G C O, evaluation of professional staff. This policy outlines the evaluation, review, documentation for the professional staff in our district. G D A, support staff positions. I'm going to make a note that on the last agenda that I had supplied, I had put a typo in there and we had adopted, we had, I think we said it right, but then we put it on the agenda, but it was, we had it as F G D A, but it's supposed to be G D A, so I'm going to put that in there. But this policy outlines the support staff positions and how all support staff positions are established by the committee, and how the superintendent, working with the committee, creates action plans and job descriptions or specifications for the positions, so it's like for the, for the adding of positions. G D B, support staff contracts and compensation plans. This policy outlines the compensation plans for those support staff team members, and that the school committee sets the rates for the policy pay for the personnel not covered under the collective bargaining agreements. And then what we're going to do is, we're actually going to recommend to adopt this policy, however, we know that we'd, we'd followed up with you on, on this one, Mr. Bodwell, and you were going to reach out to Mrs. Grant, just regarding some questions on the current process on comp time, overtime, and how those are handled, but we're not going to hold the policy, we're going to move forward with it. And then G D O, evaluation of support staff, very similar to the evaluation of professional staff, basically outlines the evaluation for support staff, and we verified with Mr. Bodwell that, that the policy outline that you see is current practice into how they're doing things today. We had, those were the ones that were, that were moving to bring to our index that are new. So we had a couple that were, had small revisions, real quick. G C I A, philosophy of, of staff development. The title was changed, it was professional development, and now it's philosophy of staff development. And then what was removed in those policies were items number four and five. G C K, professional staff assignments and transfers, and then also G C Q F, suspension and dismissal of support staff men, members, excuse me, there were very minor revisions. G C R D, tutoring for pay, this one also had minor revisions, however, just wanted to, the one thing to highlight, there was a note that M A S E had added regarding teachers' tutoring in, in their own district. The policy itself had hardly any revisions, but there was just a note that we didn't have, so it just said that a teacher cannot tutor in their own district if the district is going to pay for the tutoring unless the district has included a provision in the teacher's collective bargaining agreement, providing a set amount of extra pay for tutoring by teachers that will be included in the teacher's regular paychecks. So it seemed pretty straightforward. And then, um, we also had last month reopened policy, J E B, entrance age. And at the last meeting, Mrs. Hume had requested that we reopen it. Robin and I looked at it, we didn't make any edits, however, we wanted just to see what others think, so we put a slide as to what the old policy was prior to December 4th, I think, and then what the new, or the revised policy that we adopted from M A S E was. So I wanted to open this one up for some discussion, because I know this came up as, I think there was a parent inquiry.
Yeah. And just to, so just to catch Cara up, we opened this policy back in November, we reviewed it in December, so the policy on the left was the one we originally had. The policy on the right is the one, the revisions that are, were made and are currently in place. We reopened it last month because there was, oh, we wanted to look at including the entrance age. I know that that was a concern that Mrs. Hume had had. I mean, it's there under point number one, so I think we should just take a minute to look at it and see if there's anything else we want to discuss.
So I think it's just a little, it's just how it's stated, so it says, you know, child must be five years of age on or before August 31st to enter kindergarten, this, you know, children who will be five years of age prior to September 1st, so I, I don't know.
It seems like there's a lot more language on the old policy about how proof old you are, that it's not really.
Yeah, it was a lot about proving, having a certified copy of your birth certificate or.
Yeah.
So, I mean, any, any questions, any revisions, anything?
Do you see anything for?
So I guess the language on the right, my question would be, what happens to the child whose birthday is September 1st? Because I see prior to, and falls out.
Ah, I see what you're saying, so.
There will be someone whose birthday is.
Yep, it is on September 1st, you are absolutely right.
I just feel like it could be.
That's a good one, yeah. No, I think we should change that, I think that's important.
I feel like it could be a slippery slope where we're not really specific with a hard deadline, whereas one year, let's say this will admit someone whose birthday was September 2nd.
Yep.
And then actually you could have someone who might be September 1st, and they can revert back to, well, you let someone in on September 2nd.
So is it this part, the admission of children whose birthdays fall after September 1st will be solely at the school's discretion, is that the part, like, do you want that removed? Is that the?
The school's discretion part concerns me, because I do feel like it could be a slippery slope, and if I let, or if anyone lets one child in, it can always be brought back to that. And it's hard when you, you know, you talk to parents, you tell you their kids are ready for kindergarten, but they've never had any kindergarten. Are they socially and emotionally ready? It's just a slippery slope, I feel, in the September 1st part.
So we'll, we definitely need to make sure that those dates align. I guess, let's go ahead, talk.
The school's discretion, though, that seems vague to me as well, like, who at the school?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So I guess one thing that I, that I think about is that September 1st is the cutoff, and for the most part, 99.99% of kids, there's no exception to be made, but if somebody comes in and says, you know, here's my, my child who's reading above grade level, is demonstrating all of, you know, social emotional benchmarks, and their birthday's on September 2nd, I feel that, that I'd like to, I'd like the district to have the autonomy to be able to make that exception. But, I mean, I'm also fine with making it a hard and fast September if we don't ever want to make exceptions.
I just get concerned about what data we may use, I mean, just because if we're trying to, it's, it's hard to tell. I agree with that, I, I hear your point, for sure, I just get concerned of, you know, one year it'll be okay there, whether we do reading fluency or something like that, it just might, you know.
It would be like, it wouldn't even be reading fluency.
Yeah, right.
And then I worry as they get older, so they might be ready for kindergarten, but they're always going to be on the younger end. What about when they get to upper elementary or middle school?
Yep, that makes sense. So I am going to revise the motion. So my new motion will be to accept all of the policies written here, I'm going to just save the, I'm not going to say the titles, I'm just going to say the letters. G C J, G C O, G D A, G D B, G D O, G C I A, G C K, G C Q F, G C R D, as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so that's all the other policies, not J E B. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move to adopt, can you, thank you, move to adopt J E B, entrance age, as written on the right, excluding, or omitting the line, the admission of children whose birthdays fall after September 1st will be solely at the school's discretion, but with all of the other language to remain. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything about the September, is there a?
Well, if we take that line out.
Okay, that's fine.
Cause that one was fall.
Okay, perfect.
No confusion. Any other discussion?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Um, hold on just a moment. Move to hold the following policies until the next meeting. K F Form 1, application for use of school property. K F Form 2, application for use of athletic spaces. And G D D, support staff vacations and holidays. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep, so the two forms, K F Form 1, K F Form 2, we're going to be looking at those five other policies that we've already mentioned in the beginning of the policy review that correlate with these forms and are specific to West Bridgewater. And then G D D, the support staff vacations and holidays. So in, I think, we're going to hold this one so we can work with Mr. Bodwell a little bit more in, in understanding the language that's in this policy, felt a little uncomfortable to us when we read through it. Specifically, using the cafeteria workers as an example, there was verbiage in the state policy, the M A S E policy, that stated they're expected to report to work during vacations, as the policy stipulated, and we're, you know, Mr. Bodwell, we reached out, provided a great explanation as to, you know, you know, how some of the custodial crew and, and other roles really pertain to what was being discussed, but, you know, and reporting to work during recess periods, but we just want to make sure that we're, you know, looking at it a little closer, we want to, before we recommend anything, so that was why we did that.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to warrants. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2024. Bill warrants on April 4th, 2024, for $64,576.93. April 11th, 2024, for $140,280.63. April 18th. dollars and ninety-three cents, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, for one hundred-and-forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and sixty-three cents, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, for one hundred-and-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, there was no warrant. The following two payroll warrants, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, for five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, and April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, for five-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars and fifteen cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the Selectments Office for review. Okay, public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time, audience members shall limit comments to three minutes, and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none.
My countdown started.
Oh.
I didn't try to do that.
Our next regular school committee meeting is Monday, June third, two thousand twenty-four, at six PM, right here in the middle, senior, high school learning commons, you can also, I think on our next slide, somewhere, one of our slides here shows everything going on in the district, you can also refer to the district website and newsletters. With that being said, I'm going to move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
I was afraid that the timer was going to go off, so I thought it started, like, that would be like, all right.
Okay.